At this point, it's 6:05. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First thing I need to do is to appoint a timekeeper for tonight's meeting. Who would like to be our timekeeper to keep us all in line?
I can try.
All right. Thank you, Samini.
We'll see if Jess has any tips for me as we go along.
I'm sure she'll provide tips in the chat box to keep you in line.
I don't have any tips, sorry.
So, we've got our timekeeper. At the end of this meeting, we will go into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate, and we will not reconvene into a public session afterwards. And Sarah is recording our attendance and guests. And at this point, I would open it up for public comment. Liz, did you have any requests for public comment?
I did not, but weren't we going to start with a minute of silence or a moment of silence?
I'm going to move that slightly.
Okay, got it. I didn't look at the agenda that closely.
No, I didn't. Yeah.
I have not received any public comment.
All right. Hearing no public comment, we will move on to vote, the vote section. We have three votes. So, the first item for discussion and vote was approval of the February 25th minutes.
Are you looking for someone to... What is it?
A motion to approve.
There we go. Seconded. But thank you. Roger, are we doing all three at once, or are we doing them one at a time?
I think we could do the two minutes, the two meeting minutes approvals together if there's no objections.
Yes, please.
All right. Sarah, would you like to call the roll for the...
Sure.
Approval.
Just before we vote, my only comment, and I read this yesterday, so I forget which one it was. It was a little typo, which is inconsequential. But something said "wow" when it should have said "now" or something like that. But again, it's immaterial, so.
I'll find it.
Hi, sorry I'm late. I had 6:30 in my head. I apologize.
Just in time for voting, we are voting to approve the minutes from the two board meetings.
Are we ready?
Yeah, I believe so.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmini?
Yes.
And is Ben still not here? Okay. All right, all set.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a vote for the school calendar to approve the 2021 calendar. Is there any questions regarding the calendar?
Just one question, and I guess these things don't really matter for what we need to approve. There's certain dates that are TBD.
That would be...
Those don't need to be voted on, correct?
No, that is just an informational... Our goal is to approve that the calendar meets the state requirements. Other questions? I'll take a motion to approve the calendar.
So, move.
Second.
Raul and Sheila. Sarah, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. All right, here we go. Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick? Nick?
Yes, sorry.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmini?
Yes.
And is Ben here yet? Nope. Okay. All right.
Motion passes. And we are done. I believe we are done with the vote section. At this point, I'd like to pass the meeting over to Ellen for the executive director's report.
So, what happened to the calendar? Isn't that part of this?
We just voted.
Oh, that's what that was. This was. Sorry. Okay. I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, well, we all set? Okay, I thought someone else just had a question. All right, well, it's nice to see you all tonight. I am going to share my screen with you. Screen two. All right, are you able to see that? No. All right, let's try again. How about... Super. Okay. All right, well, here we are. It is March 25th, 2021. And... Oh, that's not going to... Not going to move for me. All right, I'm gonna... Well, that's interesting. Okay, let's see if that works. All right, so here's my overview for the report this evening. We are going to talk about attrition numbers. Just to give you a little bit of information around that. Each charter schools need to backfill any seats that are... If a student withdraws, so any seats that are vacated through the year between the first day of school and February 15th, we have to backfill. If the seat, if a child withdraws after February 15th, then the seat is held for the next year. So, what we're going to be looking at here is how many seats were vacated during the year and how many seats we filled. And then we're going to look at the lottery and waitlist. This is the same slide from February. Roger asked me to include it in this one as well because on the regular calendar, it's typically looked at in March. I just had it a little bit early, so I included it last month. Then, we're going to talk for a minute about the English Language Learner Program. We had a tiered focus monitoring review, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what that is and the results from that. And then, we're going to talk about our return to school update and then a little bit of razzle-dazzle time. All righty, so first, the attrition. So, at the beginning of the year, we started with 966 students. Just as a reminder, that is our cap. During the school year, we had 12 students that withdrew, and I'll show you the next slide where they left to go. And then, during the school year, we added eight of those seats back. So, what basically happened there was there was a family that moved out very close to... Well, it was the end of January, very close to our date. And Linda tried to offer that seat out five different, those seats out five different times and wasn't able to fill them. So, those seats then will get pushed forward to next year. And so, as of the 25th, that's today, we have 963 seats due to, as I mentioned, the late January withdrawals. So, of those students, two moved out of state, one moved within the state, one returned to Worcester, two to Marlboro Public, three to Clinton, and three back to Maynard. And the reason for at least the Marlboro, Clinton, and the Maynard changes were because those schools were on hybrid models, and the families preferred those models to the remote learning that we were doing at the time. This was a slide that I showed you in February. It's the same one. There aren't any changes here. This has probably shifted a little bit, honestly, in the month because as students either accept or deny the seats, then Linda will take a couple people off the waitlist to fill that. We're only looking at sixth and seventh grade seats right now. Those are the waitlist that we have. She will not be offering out any additional seats. Right now, we're at 132 for sixth grade. We're at 140 for seventh grade. 140 is really where we want to be across the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. But we are going to wait, not add any more into eighth and ninth grade until we know which students have left, and then we'll fill those seats. But that's why you see that on the eighth and ninth grade down the bottom, where it says the waitlist is 103 for eighth grade and 125 for ninth grade, we haven't taken any students off of there yet and probably won't until we see who withdraws over the summer. Okay, a little bit about our English Language Learner Program. So, every six years, Department of Education evaluates our ELL program. A little bit different than a charter renewal, which we went through last year. But it's, you know, it's that important for this particular program. And it's similar to, they do this for special education. We were on cycle for this ELL one last, this year that we're in right now. And like I said, they do it every six years. And there are 13 criteria that are reviewed. They're all listed here. And it's very detailed. It's extensive. Kate Lee is our director of our ELL program. She's been with us a few years now. She took over this program, I would say, about two years ago now. She's also certified ELL instructor, and she also runs the program and keeps it and keeps it compliant with state and federal laws and regulations. So, she went through a complete review of her program and found that she is implemented, which means that she's compliant across the board, across all 13 of those criteria. We're very, very excited and proud of Kate. She's done a fantastic job. In January of 2017, AMSA did not have an English Language Learner Program. For those of you who've been around for a while, you probably remember that. It was one of the items that I knew that didn't exist at AMSA and that it was really important. Federal law is important, state law is important for us to have, and our students deserve to have that program to support them in their learning. And so, it was one of the very first things that Anders and I started working on was getting that English Language Learner Program up and running and where it needed to be. The fact that Kate Lee was able to bring that program and lead it into 100% compliance with state and federal law over such a short period of time in the last two years really, to me, is remarkable. I just want to shout out to Kate Lee. What a fantastic job. She's very detail-oriented, very careful about what she does, and really does a great job with our students. And so, wanted to share that great news with you that all of those elements are implemented in our program, and we passed with flying colors. So, that was exciting. Let's see. Also, so now, next, we're going to talk about the return of school. This is the big topic that's on everyone's mind, and we're going to run through this right now. And we'll take any kind of questions that you have at the end unless something pops up in the middle that you'd like to ask. So, you may recall, the last time we got together, I presented slides on a whole different program. We are talking about increasing the size of our in-person support program. And we found out a very short time later, actually, it was March 9th that the Commissioner Riley received the authority to require all Massachusetts schools to return to 100% in-person learning. And the way that the law actually reads is that the elementary schools need to be in-person by April 5th, and middle schools are by April 28th, and high schools are to be determined. So, as soon as, obviously, as soon as we got this information, we needed to really very quickly pivot into, you know, changing the school once again into an in-person learning model. Now, what was interesting about this is that, yes, it's we have, it's the 100% in-person model is actually what that means is we have to offer it to 100% of our students. Because families can choose to stay remote if they want to or to come in. And so, you know, that complicated things a little bit, but what we did was we put together, we named the program "In Person with Choice." It's not a hybrid system. The difference is hybrid typically is students come in every other week or every other day. The children who decide to choose to come into school will come into school every single day, five days a week for the rest of the year. And the children who stay remote will continue their education from home, and you'll see that we'll be doing a live streaming model. So, it's different from a hybrid. We're calling it "In Person with Choice." And we conducted a survey between March 12th and March 18th. Parents had a week. We sent out information to them of what the program would look like if students stayed home, to the best of our knowledge, and what it would look like when they came in. And they needed to commit to either option because we're really talking about once they come back on the 28th of April, they're looking at about seven weeks of school. So, when we put that survey out there, as of today, 62.62% of students will return to in-person learning on April 28th, and the remainder have chosen to continue to learn remotely from home. Just want to break that down for you a little bit so that you could see how many students we're expecting from each grade percentage and then the number, the actual number of students. And so, 62.62% translates into 603 students. 96 students in sixth grade, 94 in seventh, 79 in eighth, 107 in ninth, and 68 in 10th, 61 in 11th, and 98 of our seniors will be returning. It's really interesting, and I think, you know, one of the reasons for the smaller numbers in the 10th and 11th grade is that, you know, they won't have the vaccine for those kids until they're maybe further into the spring or the summer. I think the 11th grade is perhaps thinking, "Well, we're still going to have our senior year." So, some of them have decided to stay home. We're very happy to see that we have 98 of our 12th graders coming back, and the rest will be staying at home. But that's where we are right now. We believe that we can safely bring back 62% of our students and separate them with social distancing. The cafeterias, we're finding, are probably going to be the trickier part of this. So, here's basically the timeline. Remembering that the original back-to-school plan that all of you voted on back in August had a hybrid plan attached to it. We had a schedule. We had a lot of the planning done with that. But once again, it was a plan, and it hadn't actually been implemented yet. And the plan that is actually that we're going into is different. And so, we were, and we'd also been planning for a hybrid or a similar type return and return once we got back from winter break. A number of us started planning right away with different scenarios on what we could do. And we also know that Eric and Sean have been working on the building remediation throughout the entire year. And we did send home information to parents to let them know that Eric feels that the buildings are compliant. We have the UV air purification in all rooms and then all offices. He's bought the, a big air... Oh, what's the name of it? It's an air...
Scrubber.
Scrubber.
Thank you, Micah. Scrubber for the cafeterias. And so, then, we have recently activated our back-to-school planning team. We activated them back in, it was the third week in January, I believe, when we started to meet again. And then, this week, we reestablished those committees. So, we've been meeting as a group and talking and brainstorming and things. And then, we've now broken people up into those committees, the same ones that we had over the summer. Now, it doesn't have all of the teachers and all of that there because they gave input on the original plan, but they're also very, very busy trying to convert their, everything that they're doing into the plan that we're moving ahead. So, we've got a group of, gee, about 10, 15 of us, and we've broken it down again into the same groups, and we added one. So, we've got the academics. We've got the academic operations, operations, which is the buildings and layouts and classrooms and spacing and all of that. The IT, Erica has been absolutely fantastic working through our IT concerns that we have for moving forward. And we've also added a medical team so we can look at the COVID testing and also the contact tracing is going to be significant. I will say while we're on this slide that we will likely have cases of COVID. I don't know of any school that's open that does not have COVID that's coming into it, right? People come in, they then find out that they're positive, then the contact tracing has to happen. What the state is telling us is that it's not really moving within the school buildings, but that doesn't mean that it's not coming into the building. Schools have done a very good job on getting the information quickly and then, you know, isolating people, putting people back at home if we need to do remote learning, if there's cases and people need to be quarantined. So, I will, you know, I will put it out there. We will do absolutely everything in our power to keep that school run as tightly as we can. But there's no guarantee that cases won't come in, and we will have, we will run the full gamut of contact tracing, COVID testing, and all of that that goes along with it, and it's extensive. Our nurses are very, very busy right now getting ready. So, what we know so far, we know how many students are returning. It looks like about 603. We know who's returning, which grade they're in, and their schedules. Scheduling Avengers have been working on, they have a program that actually looks at each student, and it breaks it down and tells them how many students will be in each room each period of the day. Because then Eric and Sean need to go in, and they'll have a crew of folks to help them, but they need to go in and say, "Okay, the maximum number of kids, students that is going to be in room 306 is 15 or 18." And they have to make sure they have that number of desks spaced three feet apart and ready for the maximum number of students that's going to be in that class. Now, we definitely have some sixth and seventh grade classes that are going to have, I believe, the highest is like about 22 students in it. 22 students probably is not going to fit in room 306. So, now, we've got to find another room to move that to and put another smaller group of students in room 306, just as an example. But that's the detail that we're having to plan. And that's one of the reasons why parents need to make a choice. You can't have students going back and forth and back and forth, especially to try to come in when we've had to really design each and every classroom. It's very specific, the way the state wants it done. Desks have to be three feet apart, all facing in the same direction. There needs to be six feet at the front of the room for the teacher. We need to fit a desk in there, and so, it's very, very prescribed on what we need to do. So, going back to our slide again, we also have purchased desks for the cafeterias. The cafeterias need to be six feet apart because students will be taking off their mask in order to eat, and they need to have six feet around them. Not only in the classroom, but also in the cafeterias, we're supposed to have seating charts. So, students will come in the first day that they're in school. They will pick a seat for the cafeteria, and they're going to need to stay in that seat. The same thing in class. There'll have to be seating charts for every single class, and those always have to be observed because that's how you do your contact tracing. So, we, in order to fit as many kids, as you know, those cafeterias aren't that big. And in order to fit as many kids as we can to maximize it, we have to take the vending machines out. There'll be no serving tables in there. We've bought individual seats and desks because they can be repurposed after COVID, first of all. But because we can actually fit more students in those cafeterias with the six feet between them rather than trying to use the tables. And you may remember that we purchased quite a bit of plexiglass, and we had little plexiglass cubbies, and we're going to be able to fit more of them in there. That was okay in the fall. It's not okay in the spring. They've decided that it prevents airflow. And so, we've been told now that we cannot use the plexiglass cubbies, so therefore, we had to get the desks. We will also be doing overflow into, we bought three huge tents for outside. They have been purchased. They're already at the school. There'll be one outside of each building. They can be used for overflow for lunches. They can also be used for classes if teachers want to have a class outside. They have roll-down sides on them. They will be over by the white building with these picnic tables right now. They'll be over on the woodchips by the lower school, and there'll be one out behind the upper school building as well. All safety protocols that are recommended by the state will be in place. We will be managing traffic flow in all the hallways. The upper school building will be like a racetrack in one direction. The lower school building will be that way on the first floor, but the second, no. Second floor will be one-way. The bottom floor will not. We bought, like, what are those called? The things that Anthony bought that run down the hallway to keep the traffic.
The stations?
Thank you very much. That's going to keep the students separated on either side. As you know, there's areas of those hallways that are really only about three and a half, I think, four feet wide when you turn the corner by a couple of those rooms by the IT office. So, it's going to be important that we're able to keep those students separated and that they'll be separated as they walk down the hall. They will receive training videos that the deans are working on right now to show them how to walk around the buildings, what the traffic pattern is going to be, and how far they need to be distance from each other as they walk from class to class. Everyone will wear masks at all times except during lunch, and then they must be six feet apart. The seating charts, once again, I mentioned those are going to be very important for contact tracing. The bus, the busing guidance changed in February 11th. And instead of them being in every other seat, they now can be in every seat. Only two students per seat. The windows have to be open two inches, but it does give us a little bit more capacity. And we've been working with the bus company in Marlboro to offer, to get our Marlboro busing up and running, and Leanna has been working to make sure that the regional buses are running as well. And our lunch program, it will be a bag lunch. The lunch bags will be given out in the hallways. The kids will walk by, grab one, and then go take their seat. And that's how the lunches are going to work. Now, all those logistics, we're a school, and so, academics is our focus and part of our mission, right? And yet, at the moment, the logistics are really on the top of the administrator's minds because there's so many details, and there's honestly many, many details left. We have a list that has multiple pages of items that still are, that we're working on every day. And there's some complications with the schedule, and we need to work through those things as well. But I am completely confident in the team that we have in place and that they will, you know, I've told the teachers, "Just worry about teaching. We'll make sure that your rooms are set up, that the logistics are worked out, that the information will be communicated to you, and that you'll feel okay going into the school and that everything's going to be set for you. You'll know where you need to be." So, the, our jobs as administrators is to make sure that they walk in and that they feel they have everything that they need and that it's all set up for them. As far as technology is concerned, Erica's done a fantastic job. She's coming now to the department chair meetings every week to answer questions for the department chairs. She has bought microphone systems so that the children at home can hear her, can hear the teacher just as clearly as the ones in the classroom. And so, she's really thought through that quite a bit in training people on how to use the computer to teach students at home and project using the projector as your second screen. So, there's a lot of tricks to it that they're working on. So, teachers will instruct students in person for however many students. They're going to have a roster. They'll know exactly how many students are in person in front of them and how many students they'll be teaching from home for each one of the classes that they teach. And they'll be live streaming so that the students at home will be getting the same information at the same time as the students that are in class. I will, I will say to you that there's a very, very steep learning curve on this. There's, if you could read anything on, on the internet right now and I think what you would mostly hear is that these types of systems, they're tough on the teachers. There's a lot of work behind them to make them work well. I, in my opinion, it's not necessarily the way that you want to deliver, um, content. But we are going to do the best that we can with it because, because we're AMSA and that's what we do. But I will say that the anxiety amongst the adults is very high. Um, not for everyone, but for, for many folks, uh, there's a lot of concern around can we do this and can we do it well? They are very passionate and committed educators. And so the idea, the thought to them that, that they would be teaching less than their full, than their full capacity, their full potential is hard for them. Um, they really want to give each and every one of their students everything that they have. So knowing that they're working into, in a, into a system that has shown to be less than perfect for sure. I mean, what we're doing isn't perfect. What we were doing in 2018 was much, much better, but they are, um, this is less than perfect for, for what we had with full remote learning. And yet socially, um, and, and emotionally, this is what a lot of our students need and we want to make sure that we're meeting social and emotional needs as well. Um, and so this is what we're going to do. Um, I, I do know that just like in the fall, that this will improve over time. Um, our teachers will become masters of this. It will, but it will take time. They will all be coming back to school on April 6th. And so that's just about a week and a half away. And they're going to come in and they're going to practice in the school for two weeks. They're going to teach from there. It's going to give them an opportunity to, um, be in the school again. Because even the thought of that is, uh, very anxiety provoking for, for some of our, some of our folks. They'll be practicing, they'll have their masks on. They will be, uh, we, they have trays, movable trays in each classroom to hold their computers. They'll be practicing projecting, um, and how high the tray needs to be and, and where the cameras need to be. And so they will be doing all of that. We will also, since they'll be, um, streaming live from those classrooms, we'll make sure that the, the, um, bandwidth on the wifi is, is enough to, to cover all those classes that are happening each and every period in all of the three buildings. And so there's a lot of purposes and reasons around that, but the teachers will come back. They'll teach for two weeks in the school. Um, and then we'll have April break. And then we'll come back, the, the teachers, once again, will come back on that Tuesday and then the students will return on Wednesday, the 28th. We did determine that one student start on the 28th and you look at from the 28th until June 16th, that a one credit class, which typically meets every day on our regular schedule, but with the, the block schedule that we'll keep for the rest of the year, that those one credit classes, although they're longer, they'll only meet 14 times, believe it or not. Time goes by so fast. And the half credit classes between the 28th and the 16th will actually only meet seven times. So, um, this probably is, as much as we're going to try to make this a time of learning, um, it, it will certainly be, um, it will certainly be a, a challenge. I also want to let you know that MCAS is happening. Um, this, the federal government has said it needs to be run. It's not going to be run for accountability purposes. It's going to be run for assessment and data. That's terrific. We, we want the data. We're going to see, you know, we want to have that data. And yet remember it's going to be lost time on learning as well. These will be lost days because you have to, you have to schedule. We have, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grade MCAS. We have 10th grade MCAS and the 11th graders who didn't take MCAS last year will also need to take MCAS. All of those take time. The state is saying that they're shortening the sixth through eighth grade MCAS, but there'll be full MCAS for the 10th and 11th graders because that's their graduation determination. We will lose days. Um, I believe like four days of, of MCAS for the 10th graders and there'll be another four days lost, lost for the 11th graders as well. So, you know, keep that in mind when we're talking about only 14 classes, um, time is going to be lost. And we shan't forget about, and about AP exams. And so we have, um, AP college board has, has created three windows of times to, to test AP. There's the traditional window. There's a window, uh, later in May and there's actually even a window in June. And before, before, uh, the end of the school year, it's like the second week in June. And so our AP classes that Kate Driver did a fantastic job. She sat down and talked to the AP teacher, says, where, where do you want them? Some, they had the option of some tests being paper. Some tests are being done on the computer. She's going to be using fore kicks, um, to administer these exams. So we also have students from 10th, 11th and 12th grade all in and out as well. Um, at different times taking AP exams. Once again, um, unfortunately time lost in the classroom. But we can do it, right? We can do it. And, uh, when I met with the staff this week and, and I, you know, I know that there's, there's a lot of concerns and a lot of questions out there. And, you know, one of the biggest parts of my job this year have, has been to support our adults and let them, let them know that I, I believe in us. I believe in AMSA's ability to pivot once again, to create a, a strong program once again, even in this short period of prep time and the short time that we have, will have left in person with our students. We are AMSA. We are AMSA strong. We have one of the most amazing staff that I, I, I've ever known. My administrative team is, is second to none. And, um, so grateful for them and for everyone's willingness to turn on a dime and make this happen. And they are working and working endlessly. And, and I was going to say tirelessly, but that's not the fact. The fact is sometimes we look like walking zombies. But we will make this happen for our teachers and we will make this happen for our kids and for their families and for their education and for their futures. And, um, more than anything else, I want our teachers and our staff to feel supported, to know that we're there to help them through whatever it is that they're, they're going to face over these next several months. So many of them have put so much time and effort into getting vaccinated so that they feel good, um, and secure going back to school. But, um, they need to, they need to know that we're there for them. Um, and that is our primary purpose is to give them, um, all the support in the classroom and out of it that they need. I just, they just need to focus on teaching. And that's enough because what they're facing is extraordinarily difficult. Um, especially at the level that our teachers want to teach our kids. And so, um, I just want them to focus on that. That's because that's plenty. That, that's plenty for them. But I believe in us and I believe in our teachers. I believe in our staff. And I know that, that we've got this and we're all looking forward to June 16th. So we've got a little bit of razzle dazzle. What's my time check?
Hey Ellen, before you hit the rest of the dazzle, I don't want to, um, interrupt that. But, um, one question that came in over the live chat, um, was just, will there be MCAS for the ninth graders?
There will be, um, science biology MCAS. It will be in June, first week in June.
For the ninth graders?
For the ninth graders. It's just biology for them.
Okay. And then, um, just a, a question for the 11th graders who are taking last, the exam for last year. Will they have any sort of review or what's, what's the plan for that?
They, they, they are going to need some review for sure. Um, we have no date from the state yet on that. Uh, when I was on a call with the commissioner this week and they said that, um, they will get more information on the middle school out to us next week and that, um, high school was still to be determined.
Got it.
Sarah was in a two hour training on high school today and the, the, um, they gave them quite a zone of, of a range of dates that they could choose and it started in May, May 3rd to the end of the year. It will be interesting Liz, because they're not requiring high school kids to come back yet, but they want the MCAS done in person. Now, it seems very interesting. And so I'm, I'm expecting that they're going to pull high school kids in soon. Uh, we felt that it was very important, we're one school that if our sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders were coming back, which was the legal requirement by April 28th, that that should open up our whole school to anyone who wants to come in. Um, and that's why we didn't wait for the state to say, bring your high school back in, in, in May or so because we, we really wanted to give the opportunity to everybody who wanted to come. And, and we were very mindful of our seniors and getting them, them back in as well.
Liz, did you want to also comment, Ellen, maybe comment on the question about the breakdown of number of students per grade? You shared that earlier on the slide and so parents can rewind if they're watching, I assume?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know how that works honestly and I can't see the chat. So I don't know what anyone is, is saying.
Um, it's just a question on sharing the breakdown of number of students per grade and I think you had a slide on it already. It's just, I wanted.
Yeah, I did. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You asked for a time check and we started pretty early on this whole segment. So we have time. So you, you should continue. And then I think we should be able to finish on time.
Wonderful. Okay. So our students, um, many of you, um, probably know that they take the AMC, um, exams and it's, it's part of a competition of exams and, 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 uh, the students move up level to level in, in the competition. And this year we, we wanted to say congratulations to 13 AMSA students who qualified for the annual American. Um, so this is the, the AME test is what it, it's called. It's a, uh, it's the, this is the largest qualifying group in AMSA history. We had 13 students qualify, which to me is absolutely amazing, especially what these kids have gone through in the last year and a half. Um, but the, the AME exam is a three hour exam, um, that the students will be taking shortly. And Sarah, um, works with this program, but we really wanted to just take a minute to highlight the fact that the students who qualified to take this exam, we have three of them are in ninth grade, which I think is remarkable. Uh, and one student from 10th and you can see their names there, quite a few from 11th and also three from the, the 12th grade. But in all of AMSA's 16 year history, this, um, is the largest group that have ever, have ever qualified. And so we're very, very proud of, um, of these students and obviously their, the teachers who have worked so hard with them and their parents who support them. Um, so that's very exciting. And then I just wanted to share quickly, um, this group because AMSA is not all about academics and, and all. And I, and I just want to share, uh, uh, there's a, the, the whole entire, um, clip is actually on Facebook. But I just want to share a little bit. Jess Bowen works with these students. This is one of our after school clubs. This, this was group was started back when I started in counseling. So it was like 2015, 16.
Ellen, I can't take credit for these kids. Um, this year Sam Comito has been their advisor. So I passed the torch a little bit. So I, I have, um, other than being there at the very beginning of the school year, none of this is me. I'm super proud of them though, because they used to be me.
It's super amazing. And I'm just going to play you just, just maybe, uh, less than a minute of, of this, but they're worth, um, it's so sweet. I, I watched it and I'm like, oh my gosh, these kids are adorable. Okay. Can you hear them?
Yep.
Ladies and gents, this is the moment you've waited for. You've been searching in the dark, sweat soaking through the floor. Buried in your bones, there's an ache that you can't ignore. Taking your breath, stealing your mind. And all that's real was love you. Don't fight it. It's coming for you, running at you. It's only this moment, Tokyo comes after your favorite dream. Can you see it getting closer? Just run it cause you feel the feeling taking over.
So they, they, they're, um, it, it goes, it goes on and.
For all those times you stood by me. For all the truths that you made me see. For all the joy you brought to my life. For all the wrongs that you made right.
Aren't they amazing? So that, that's our, um, our acapella group and, um, anyway, they're, they're wonderful and, and it just goes to show you how well-rounded, um, our students are. And during a pandemic, how committed they are to be able to put something like this together and the hours that they spent. Um, that, that it's just, it's, they're just beautiful.
In addition to all of their singing and their arranging, one of the reasons I passed off to Sam this year is because they had to do all of the technical learning and the, um, all of the learn, they have not sung in person together as a group. So if any of you are singers, um, to sing solo is totally different and to sing in this remote world. I'm, I'm just crazy proud of them. I can't believe how much they've been able to do. The learning curve of all of the technological stuff to get, that they entered, um, they qualified for an online acapella contest. And I mean, I'm following them from front distance, but, uh, it's, it's really, really, I'm so proud of them.
Absolutely. They're, they're just, they're delightful and they're delightful kids, um, just all, all around. So although we have many challenges ahead of us over these next, um, few months and, um, I, I do want to, to just assure you that we are all excited to see our kids. And every time you think, think about, um, some logistic that seems like it's, uh, an impossible thing to, to figure out, we need to focus just on our kids and just remember how great they are and how wonderful it's going to be to see them. And, um, and welcome them back to AMSA and look forward to next year when we get to have all of them back and we get to open up the doors of the school and, um, and greet them every morning, all of them. And, and run school the way that we really want to run school. And then spend a lot of time focusing on how we make up for the time that, that we've lost. Cause no matter how hard we've tried and how much our teachers have committed to their online learning. And they will commit to this new in-person learning with choice. Um, nothing replaces being in a classroom with them. And so I thank them for their work and their dedication this year, uh, for sticking with us and, um, and we look forward to seeing our kids.
Hey Ellen, another question came in over Facebook Live. So I just want to get it to you, um, before you wrap up. Um, will the classrooms be sanitized between classes?
Well, that's a really good question. Might be, may need to answer the logistics on that one. I, I do know that we're not having clubs and things after school because the cleaners are going to have to come in and really sanitize everything every night, every afternoon and evening, and they need that extra time. Um, we've always had the spray, well, since the spring, the spray and the teachers were, were cleaning the desks. Um, Mike, do you know, um, what the plans are? We're going to follow all state regs, that's for sure. Have you guys talked about that yet, Mike?
The dismissal time for after school clubs?
No, cleaning, um, cleaning the desktops and things like that.
Between classes.
Between classes. I thought, okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, I mean, every, every classroom has, uh, the spray that facilities provided, um, last year back, way back in March. Um, and we have access to, we, I was in a meeting with, uh, Mr. Lane today and he's ready when told to order as many wipes as we need as well, but we do have the spray in each classroom.
Right. There was no wipes to be had last, last year. And so we did, we bought gallons and gallons of this, this pink, um, toxic spray. And, uh, we've got like 50,000 gloves and, and things like that. So, um, and the cleaners will, uh, will be ramping up and they will be doing hard, you know, the handles and all of that, um, also. Yep.
One other, one other question Ellen that I just got was around technology and the use of computers within the classroom. So the students that are going to be in the classroom, will they be using computers at all or will it just be the students that are learning remote?
And yet not really Liz. I mean, you know, they'll be doing the typical, you know, IXL and math and things like that on, on, um, the Chromebooks. That where we, we can't have all the kids running the computers at the same time because I don't think we'll have the bandwidth to, to handle it. So the priority is the bandwidth, um, zooming home, live streaming home to the students. And then teachers will sign out the Chromebooks as, as they, as they need to. We do have a couple of teachers who will actually still be teaching from home. Um, not many, just a couple. And those classes will be prioritized also because the students in school will have to, um, live stream as well as the students at home. And we'll have a supervisor in each one of those classes. So, uh, we've got to prioritize that as far as bandwidth is concerned. We also have three. We also have three hundred Chromebooks that are out in the community without replacements at the moment, so, um, you know, we're, but instead of having to have a Chromebook cart with thirty Chromebooks in it, we typically, we probably can make the Chromebook carts, Erica's looking at that right now, whether some of them can be fifteen, some of them can be twenty, um, to break down to cover the classes as we need them. But they'll be signed out much like like before.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ellen, this is Pamaja here. Uh, I talked to Erica before, I can answer a couple of things. Uh, I I are give a little bit more information. Uh, the CS labs will have lap, uh, computers in there because they are supposed to be having the computers in there. And, uh, there are a couple of students asked me like, you know, how are we going to clean up the key keyboards, like, you know, once one one class leaves and the other comes in. Erica told me that we have some kind of UV thing that we have to run across, so the CS labs are all set with regards to cleaning on that one. Just so that the information is out there, I just wanted to let you know.
We actually bought over a hundred UV ones and the UV ones can be used on desks and the and the computer surfaces and any surface that you wanted. Yeah, we bought those actually in the fall. Thank you, Pamaja. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you all very much. I don't know if you have any, uh, any other questions.
Really nice report out Ellen, thank you.
Yes, thank you Ellen. Uh, board or any other questions for Ellen at this point? Alright, hearing no other questions, again, thank you for the excellent report and look forward to getting back into school. Uh, next up I have Maura with the parent rep report. Maura, floor is yours.
Um, I don't, since obviously a lot has changed since the last board meeting and there's been a lot of communication um, since then. Um, a lot of the concerns, questions, um, have obviously been addressed with the plan that Ellen and the team has put out for the end of April. Um, but just to summarize, so the board knows and I'm happy to share, obviously, um, I want to share all this communication with you guys individually as well, um, um, I've been having the conversations with Ellen and with a select number, um, of folks as we're moving forward with the plan. But I got, um, twenty individual parent emails, um, or family emails and out of those nineteen, we're really sort of in favor of going back and obviously we've done the survey, so we have the numbers. Um, and a lot of them had kind of questions and commentary, I think, around, um, our communication as a board and as a school. Um, and I think a lot of that has been addressed. I know that we've spoken with a couple of folks. Um, certain members of the board have and I know that Ellen has been talking with a lot of folks about this as well. Um, but just our communication through the process, it's a challenging situation, right? It's constantly changing. Um, and I think we, I know the conversations that I've had and that some of the other board members have had, just so sort of the the general public knows, we've owned a lot of this communication piece and know that it is a charge that we have as a board to to work on in some areas. Um, and also sort of clarification, right? What do we do? I think it came up a number of times at the last board meeting, you know, what do we do as a board and and kind of where where are we heading? What do we cover? What do we not? Where's our oversight? Where are we stepping on toes? Where are we not, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so I just wanted to kind of assure all of the parents, as I'm in the process of getting back to everybody one-on-one, um, that yes, these are, these are the things that we are working on, um, and I think have become very clear to especially myself, I won't speak for everybody else, um, but I know through this work, um, we definitely have we have some changes that we can make and some improvements because I think our job, uh, much like our students, is to always do better. So that's a, that's pretty much the parent report, nothing new and different. I think all the questions are being answered and addressed and we're all sort of along for the along for the journey. So, um, I do want to say that I appreciate all of you guys listening to my my comments, my questions, um, on behalf of the parents. I know that Ellen and the team has been really responsive. Uh, it's not easy. I know you've got a big, big job to juggle here, but, um, we're moving forward and that's what matters. So, thanks.
Thank you, Maura. Any questions for Maura? Uh, next we have, uh, Jess with the faculty report. Jess, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Um, you know, Ellen did a really great job of sort of capturing a lot of what, uh, the faculty is feeling. I I um, sometimes it's, I am in an awkward position where what I hear the ED say and what I'm hearing are like, I'm like, ooh, wait, what? But no, not. So whatever Ellen said, I I concur, the faculty, there is a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of mixed emotions out there, a lot of people excited to get back, excited to see students for sure, but that it comes with a lot of, a lot of angst and questions and, um, you know, it's it's a feeling of unsettlement, change is always of unsettling, change is always difficult. Um, I think teachers are dealing with personal questions like what, what if I get sick? What if I bring sick, what if I bring something home to my family members? Um, we of course are always, our goal is reaching all of our students the best we can and now we're gonna have this two groups of students, so I think all of us acknowledge that teaching in person in our ideal classroom is the best way to do it. But going back to this version of in person is not going to be that ideal, will not like, how will we, will we be able to do group work? Will we be able to like mix about our students? Um, all of the activities that we have come to sort of put in our toolbox, we might not have our full toolbox available to us. Um, how will I keep track of the kids? I I don't want to forget about the kids at home. I don't want to focus on the kids at home and lose the kids in person. Uh, so I I mean, there's just a churn of a thousand questions. Um, the, you know, administration's been great communicating with us as much as they can and answering questions as we go. I'm open to asking us, what are the things you're concerned about? What can we address ahead of time? Um, and just, we're we're just kind of all knowing that, um, there's, there's, there were, I'm I'm probably gonna screw it up and I'm gonna forget. I'm not, I'm not gonna do as good job keeping in touch with the at-home kids as I want to or as I'm trying to or the other way around, or I'll overcompensate. We kind of are just, you know, we're, we're, we're afraid. We're afraid that we're not gonna do the best job that we always sort of hold ourselves to. Um, and, but I think that all of us kind of recognize that, um, the the norm of us getting back to our regular classrooms with our regular teaching is always our ultimate goal and, um, this maybe is one step closer, but will, um, come with with bumps. I think, um, what we don't want to do is sort of lose, you know, what we've got, we've hopefully gotten fairly good at delivering an online um, education and we don't want to kind of lose anything we've gained, um, by coming to in person, so hopefully um, we can at least be as good as we have been, um, and maybe even better. Um, I know for me personally, I reached out to my nephews who, um, have been in a hybrid model all year and I I was, I was grilling them. I'm like, well, what are the teachers who screw this up? What do they do? Do they forget people at home or, uh, you know, all, I had like a thousand questions and they're like, oh, Auntie Jess, don't worry about that. Uh, so that that was helpful, uh, for me personally. So I think that sort of that's where teachers are, um, and um, that a lot of these questions will not be able to be answered until where we're we're there. We'll sort of have to figure them out on the fly. Will we be able to go into the teacher's room? Will we have to wear masks in the teacher's room? A lot of us are getting vaccinated. Um, so there's lots of questions like, like, like this that everybody is sort of asking and we will get answers. We haven't worked out all of the details yet, but we we sort of, we we understand that they're coming and, um, I think people are are happy that the administration is open to the questions and we feel like our questions are being at least heard and will be addressed in time. Um, so, um, I think the levels of anxiety among among staff members vary wildly. Some staff members are very anxious to come back, um, and and some would have been in person all year, so there's a really big gamut there. I think it's hard to kind of, um, summarize in one broad stroke what all the faculty is feeling because just like there's, um, a wide variety of what parents are looking forward to and students are looking forward to, uh, teachers are are just the same as well. So, um, there's, there's just a lot of, we have, we, we know that there's a lot of questions, we have them too and we're just, we're all trying to be part of the answers and 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 do the best job that that we can. So that that's where we are. Um, I also want to mention that, um, it is time, a little sad time for all of us. Um, I am approaching the end of my term as the faculty rep. For, as a refresher, this is a one-year elected term and the faculty rep is allowed to be, there's a two-term limit. I'm at the, I'm approaching the end of my second term here and so, um, Ellen and Sarah Snow and I have had a few emails about electing a replacement and hopefully having that person in place for for June first, as I am officially a lame duck. That's all I've got.
Questions for Jess? Jess, I'd like to thank you for your service on the board. This is, actually for those people who don't know, this is her second, uh, two-year term on the board, so she's served a total of four years as the parent faculty rep. Is the faculty rep.
I'm like the Franklin Roosevelt of faculty reps.
Hey, hey Jess, I do have a question, just out of curiosity, is there any, do you have any perspective around the percentage of teachers that have been able to be vaccinated or or are interested in in vaccination?
I don't know if I have numbers in that, interested? What are you kidding me? We're all interested.
Yeah, I know.
We're all staying up till two in the morning, refreshing the CVS site every ten minutes. Um, there's a few staff members who have some sort of, um, magician-like quality to find the slots and they've been helping people um, uh, fi- find slots and helping everybody get access to those. I've had my first vaccine, my second one will be the day after Easter, right before teachers come back on campus. So, um, I think I might be, um, there's people who have, are ahead of me, but there's people who are behind me too, so I'm maybe in terms of like when I'll be fully vaccinated. Um, I know Maureen Searle, the nurse, is sort of asking us to let her know and, um, keeping track of that. Um, so, um, my sense is that a a a big chunk of the faculty will be fully vaccinated by the time students are on campus, but I don't have access to numbers. I don't know if, um, Mike or Ellen or Maureen have those numbers. And as far as I know, we are not required to be, but it is an option that teachers are seeking, so, um, and I I I believe that is the correct answer for that.
Yeah, I heard there were some vaccine Avengers out there who are doing amazing jobs getting the, uh, slots.
Finding the slots, yes.
Thanks, Jess.
Other questions for Jess? Alright, thank you. Next up. Next up, we have, uh, any, any, uh, items to flag for discussion from the executive director report, parent rep or faculty rep report? Hearing none. Next is the, uh, is chair, chair business. First, I'd like to say there's been a recent loss in our community and that if any of the board members wish to contribute to a donation on behalf of the board, that they should contact Liz. So. So that that covers that. Um, second, uh, we are going to start the April twenty ninth board meeting early, starting at five PM. We're gonna have a ninety-minute uh, diversity and inclusion training, followed by the regular board meeting afterwards. So set your set your, set up your calendar appropriately and hopefully as many of the board members can attend as possible. Uh, third, I'm like, looking for, uh, volunteers to join, board member volunteers to join the board recruiting task force. So as we're coming to April, we're looking to uh, restock the board and and committees particular, but but board members, if there's people that are interested in, uh, serving on the, uh, board recruiting task force, I'd suggest that they contact Sheila and we'll kind of point from, point from there. Questions on that?
Roger, I don't have a question necessarily, except Sheila, um, it's also time and Jess, you mentioned it about the faculty rep, but it is, uh, coming time for the parent rep to also, uh, find a new face. Um, and so I don't know Sheila, if you, I'm happy to lend my help, obviously, through PTO or board or however that piece works. Whatever you need, I'm here.
Well, I know that the parent rep is is sent to us from the PTO, so they have the front-end part of that and then we'll work with onboarding whoever that new person is.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Great. Finally, I'd like to invite, there's no other questions on that, I'd like to yeah, invite, uh, Sumini to talk about, uh, next steps or sort of summary from the board offsite meeting. So, like to pass the time to Sumini at this point.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Um, I'm also checking time, as you know, so we're a couple of minutes ahead of schedule, but I know I have a few, you know, I'm gonna try and keep this short. I'm happy to take questions at the end if we have time or you can catch up offline with me. So I'm gonna share my screen. Um, this, uh, presentation should also be a part of, um, the agenda, you're able to see, perfect, so this is really a report out and a summary of the strategic goal framework, um, AMSA board, um, offsite that we had and, uh, in back in in, uh, February. Um, I want to actually start by thanking the board for all of and and all the participants who gave us as much data as we got. There was a lot of discussion and, uh, Maura, you touched on a few things, um, as you talked about, uh, uh, concerns from the community. And I hope you'll see all of that reflected as part of some of the goals that, uh, we're proposing or at least, um, working out at the moment. Uh, it, to me, it was a very lively meeting. I I really thought we got to know each other as board members a lot more and I think that this board is really at the cusp of being able to define a legacy for what the AMSA board should be doing on a continuous basis. Um, so I really appreciate all the conversations we've had and I also really appreciate the offline conversations that I've had with many of you. Um, I also reached out to Pauline and to Mike Glass and I had some really good input from them as well. So a lot of that is, pretty much everything is reflected as part of this report out. So, um, we started that meeting with the objectives to introduce a strategic goal framework, which, um, you will see reflected as we start to put the goals together. Uh, but what we really got into was to brainstorm those long-term, three-year and one-year goals based on the vision and the, and everyone who participated gave us a lot of data. Uh, what we ended up doing was really collecting a spreadsheet of that data. Um, and by the end of the meeting, we had a reflection of some of the stuff that Maura touched on, which is, you know, where should the board be involved? Where is it really board oversight, uh, while it's really a goal for, um, the school uh, to be able to put together the kind of targets that we want to achieve. And I worked offline with many of you to condense these into themes, and so I want to give a high-level view of the themes today and discuss some next steps. So where we voted on the board being yes and those themes were about defining a role, what is the board's role? Building a board recruitment pipeline, which Roger, you, um, you know, talked about the task force. We wanted really to include diversity and also discuss the idea of an alumni position on the board. Uh, we said we wanted to develop a robust onboarding process for the board and I've talked to some of you offline about that as well. And last but not least, we really wanted to make our board meetings much more efficient, which I think Sheila, you'll be talking a little bit more about later on. Um, and all of these themes are, as next steps are owned by the governance committee and I expect to be discussing more of this as part of the governance committee. Um, okay, so another part of the board's yes themes were around fundraising. Fundraising in support of goals such as resources and talent retention. And then there was a big piece from both Ellen as well as from, um, board members about board oversight to ensure that the mission is really front and center, you know, what, how do we support what makes AMSA AMSA? What is the secret sauce around that and how do we make sure that we continue to support that mission? Which includes the Excel excellent academics with academic, emotional and social supports in place so that students can perform at optimum levels. Uh, a lot of that, Ellen, you reflect in your, um, reports to us and part of that is the transparency that you're giving us into what work is happening in the school and that's part of the board's role as well, so I definitely see that as as making progress. But let's get into some of the stuff where we said, well, the board really doesn't need to get into these kinds of things, which is around to get into these kinds of things, which is around the support, the putting together of an alumni program, metrics that measure alumni success, DEI efforts that would be anything separate from what the school directs, and dissemination of education best practices, or growing student internship or research programs. The last one I just want to comment on, that doesn't mean that the board can't network and bring in opportunities, but what we're saying is that really the school administration is taking on the role of directing these efforts, and we can support that in however way, our personal network or any other thing that we can provide. So these were places, and maybe there's more, and we can definitely take the data on that, where we said, well, the school really is taking on responsibility for these, and very much Ellen and her team have the role to direct these efforts, and the board can support, but it's not typically a board goal to do any of this work. But here's one, that's an interesting one that came up, and we had a lot of discussion about, I wrote it down as a middle theme, because honestly, I'm not sure I had a great title for it. But we talked about fundraising that requires long-term financial modeling, which includes building out scenarios, listing desired goals that require funding, such as facilities, and how do we make sure that long-term we're in the right facilities for AMSA? Infrastructure that includes tools and technology and competitive pay, again, part of the vision is really being able to attract and retain excellent talent as part of our teachers, who really actually are the secret sauce of AMSA. And we think that this is more of a partnership between school administration and members of the board, because there's expertise on both sides that we can leverage, and this will be next steps that are pending a few other ongoing discussions that will help us direct some of our targets better. So I really, that brings me to the end of my presentation. I'm going to stop sharing mostly so that I can take any questions that you might have, or tell me if there's anything else that I missed that you'd like to see a part of this. But what I'm seeing is that I probably will want to have more offline conversations as we distill out these themes. I'll start to put it together in the framework that we discussed earlier and socialize that. For those of you who met with me during these last few weeks, I really appreciate your time, and for everyone on the board that's given us time on this, it's really, I think, setting us up for what we need to be doing over the next few years. So thank you.
I just have one comment, and I just want to thank Samini, because I feel like that's a very tough meeting to hold, and there's a lot of effort that goes into it. And I feel like, I feel like it's a thankless job, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
We are not an easy bunch to wrangle.
Yeah, I was going to second thanks, Nick, for pointing that out.
Shall I say, I enjoy it? And you guys are a really nice bunch to work with, so I didn't, it wasn't an issue. Thank you.
And thank you, Samini. Any other questions for Samini at this point?
I guess, and only if it's a short answer. The next steps with these goals, are we going to formalize them somehow as short-term goals versus longer-term? I know we talked a little bit about that.
Yes, I'd love to see that happen. I think we'll be continuing that conversation and prioritizing in governance. So Sheila, maybe you and I can talk about when and how to do that. So that's what I'm expecting to do. And the one around the financial modeling piece, I think Roger will have some more conversations about when and how to get that started. So yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think will be interesting is look to governance to define what belongs within governance and what things are beyond governance. Clearly, the, for example, the financial modeling is somewhere between finance and development. So that's clearly not a governance task, but I think the next logical step is that governance is take a crack at prioritizing those goals and defining those that are outside their scope. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for me as chair before we go on to committee reports?
Hearing none. Is Ben or a member of?
Ben's here, yep.
Ah, Ben, great, you're here. So you're up.
Sure, so yeah, so development committee met this past month. We were going to be joined by the PTO, unfortunately, I think there was a conflict, and that didn't work out. So we continued the meeting and talked about the tools we have on, in our disposal. We reviewed, and we had done some, I had done some research with Mark Vidal on what our subscription was, what we have for donor perfect, and how we could better leverage that. We reviewed all of the website design that Mr. Finkel has put together for the development aspect of how people can get and get in touch and communicate from a community, from a business, from a family point of view. So he added some feedback and did those types of things. Maura has been continuing to work with the golf committee on fundraising and things like that. We had some communications back and forth on better ways to optimize that. I'll ask you, Maura, is there any updates that you wanted to share here at the board regarding any of your involvement with the golf committee up to this point?
Just everybody mark your calendars. I, oh god, now I'm totally blanking on the date. I think it's August 10th. I will confirm that, but it is out there. Mr. Finkel, I know you know it as well. But get your foursomes in early. If you want to sponsor, please do. It was a great event last year, even in the midst of COVID, and we're looking forward to a much better time this year, so.
Yeah, great, thanks a lot, Maura. And then annual campaign is moving forward. I think we're doing pretty well in terms of that. But other than that, Roger, that's pretty much all we have to communicate this month.
Questions for Ben?
All right, thanks, Ben. And Maura, looking forward to the golf tournament. Education committee, Liz.
Yes, so for our March meeting, we actually were joined by a couple of our alumni from AMSA. So two of our prior student representatives from a couple of classes, Katie Canastraro and Nathan Lee, along with our two current student representatives, Allison Silva and Trey Fusillo, excuse me. We hosted a student roundtable. They actually provided us with some great feedback and insight into their experience at AMSA. They gave us some constructive feedback on some areas where there's opportunity for improvement in the future. And so it was just a really good session. I think the biggest thing that came out of it, and I know it was on one of the previous slides, was around really getting an alumni group going, but not, I think not in the sense that we talk about it, but in the sense that students can utilize the AMSA alumni, especially when they're going through the college process. I thought that would be, you know, just a very interesting way of doing it. And so we have put the person who really seemed to have a passion for it in touch with AMSA, so that they can, you know, they can obviously get that going. I know Mr. Vidal is, has it on his agenda and is working on it. So there is definitely alumni who have a passion for this as well. But it was just really nice to get a chance to have the alumni come back and obviously talk to our current students and get their feedback around, you know, what things are working in AMSA and what we can do to improve. So they did, they did a great job, and we had a really nice session. We also had a lively discussion around the back-to-school, but since Ellen covered that, I don't want to try and repeat any of that, so I will leave that to Ellen. Any questions?
See, hearing no questions. On to. Governance.
Yes. So just a couple of things. I will pass it to Raul first. He disappeared on me. Is he still there? On diversity and inclusion. Oh, there you are, we're eating. That's who you get for making fun of my meeting before.
Yeah, I don't have much to share. So the discussion that we had in governance was, if you remember, we were talking about whether we have to create a separate entity, or how we would structure the diversity and inclusion work that the board does. And after much discussion, we agreed that this would be something that would be part of governance, that we continue to discuss in governance as the things that are appropriate for the board. As you saw in Sami's presentation on the strategic goal framework, we did discuss it also as it relates to the goals of the board, and agree that this was something that the board leaves, would not create new diversity and inclusion efforts that are not aligned with what the administration's doing, but obviously, the board would always have a governance role in whatever happens. So any instance of concern, or an escalation procedure for any complaints that have to do with diversity and inclusion should be handled by the board, and then we agree that that would be, that would happen through governance. So as part of those goals, as you saw, maybe, you know, we'll refine this, but the discussion was about creating a vision for that, taking the next steps with the consultants that we're working with right now, and, you know, what are the assessments and the kinds of things that we'd learn on what the board must do to continue to support that effort? But so again, that will continue to happen in governance. So I don't think there's anything more specific than that from the discussion, and it all has to do with following up with those goals that we put together.
Does anyone have any questions on that before I move on from Raul? He can get back to whatever he was eating. All right, thank you. I am going to try to share my screen just to talk a little bit about meeting effectiveness. So real quick, we had, had that as kind of a end-of-meeting thing for our offsite. We didn't quite get to it, but I have looked with the governance committee at some other schools and nonprofits work with meeting effectiveness, and came up with a couple of ideas to talk about what that might look like for us. And now you're seeing stuff from my work, which I don't want you to see. Okay, there we go. Can everyone see that? Great, thanks, Roger. So the first thing that. The first thing that I would look at, you know, that I'd like to talk to you guys about, and this is kind of informational today, and we can circle back to it, people can ask me questions offline. You know, the first thing we looked at was groups that do a consent agenda. So I don't know if people have experience on other boards or whatever with a consent agenda, but what that means is that we would put together a group of kind of routine procedural up-and-down votes that aren't controversial, that don't require additional discussion, and that would be a straight-up or down vote right at the front of the meeting. So what that would mean is that, you know, for those of us that might skim the meeting minutes while we're talking at the beginning of the meeting, that can't happen, obviously, that pre-work needs to be done. And what that might include for us, that would be sent out prior to the meeting, is minutes, committee reports, contract approvals, final approval for any item that was previously discussed. And the caveat to that is that if people receive that, and they look at it, and they decide, no, we need to talk about X, Y, or Z, any board member can say, no, that needs to be moved to full discussion, and it automatically is. There doesn't need to be a majority, there doesn't need to be anything like that, we just move it out. So I don't want people to feel like a consent agenda boxes you into not having a discussion, because it doesn't. So how that would work is that the chair would prepare a packet with items for the consent agenda, that's going to be distributed to all the trustees. And we talked a little bit about how we all, with the exception of finance, that I know meets very close to a board meeting for very specific reasons. I think we all could probably do a better job of getting our stuff in a little bit quicker. But the chair would prepare that packet and distribute it to all of us. We would be expected to review that prior to the meeting. And at the beginning of the meeting, the chair would ask if anyone wants to move an item to regular discussion, and as I said, if a member requests such a move, it must be moved out of the consent agenda to regular discussion. The secretary includes full text of resolutions, reports, recommendations that are adopted as part of the consent agenda. So all that information stays with our board, you know, in the record, as it were. So that was kind of my initial thoughts on consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on that? Because there's one other issue I'm going to move to real quickly, to try to keep us on time. Any thoughts about that? And similarly, if a specific committee, like just like with the development committee, with what Ben was just talking about, you know, if there's something that you really want to draw out and have some more discussion of, we can do that, and the board report would be moved out to the longer-form meeting. So the other thing that we and I looked at, and, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was on mute there. Just as a clarifying question, so if, for example, use governance, if you just had a report where you weren't looking for discussion, that would then become part of the consent agenda?
Correct.
You would not have a governance committee report?
Exactly, so it could just be a blurb, governance met, you know, discuss modifications to biolabs that are due on such and such a date, or whatever it might be. And then that would just go into the consent agenda, yeah.
Until that, and if, the opposite side, is if you did have an item that you wanted to discuss.
Any one of us could say, you know, governance needs to have time in the full meeting to discuss our, what we did.
And it could actually be a split of those, it could be a hybrid.
Absolutely.
So you could only, the goal would be that only the items involving, that need a meeting discussion in the board would be discussed?
So yeah, the whole objective is that anything that's kind of pro forma goes into that consent agenda, but anything that needs, you know, discussion would be moved out to the full board meeting.
So another way, I just, another way to say it is if it's an inform item, it's a day in the consent agenda. So, you know, finance is a good example, right? It's typically inform. There's rarely any discussion items that need to be had.
Right, and on the same token, Kristin, if one of the other board members looked at your materials and said, no, I really, I do want to discuss this, I have questions for finance, or whatever, we would move it off.
Thanks, Sheila.
Sure. The second, I want to go back down now. The second thing that really struck me, and actually, this has been playing on my mind since we did our offsite almost a year and a half ago now, I guess, almost, where our facilitator was talking about the frequency with which we meet. You know, and this would involve some changes to our biolabs and stuff, so this again is just something for people to think about and ask questions about, but overly, you know, just one of the things overly frequently meet, overly frequent meetings can lead to, you know, filler items where there are, you know, just things we're bringing up for the sake of bringing something up, or also trustees not have adequate time to prepare for meetings in between. So my kind of discussion point, or point I wanted some input on, was does our meeting frequency optimize our productivity? And I think that's something that we really need to think about, both the full board meetings and our committee meetings. So our different committees have different objectives, right? And I know that I can't speak to Kristin's group, I can't speak to Liz's group, I know what governance has to deal with, and I think we could look at that as a governance committee and decide, is there room in there? Do we need to be meeting every month that we're meeting, and looking at our committee topics and all of that? That's something that I'm going to circle back to those committee chairs about, and just say, like, when you look at it critically, and I would encourage you at your next committee meeting to think about talking about that. How often do we need to meet? What are our objectives during the year, and where can we meet those? And I'm going to be, you know, brutally honest, one of my concerns as we try to expand the board, fill emptying board seats, and fill them with people who might not be parents, who might not have, you know, that kind of a tie to school, I want us to think about what we're requiring time-wise and commitment-wise from these people, you know, if we're looking for these, you know, people who are very tied into the STEM community, or to the business community and things like that, and what are we asking them to do, and is it the most productive use of their time and hours? So that's kind of my point on that. Like I said, expansion of the board, just thinking about what's reasonable, alternating month to month, you know, there are boards where the committees meet one You know, there are boards where the committees meet one month, the full board meets the next month. That may not be completely practical for us, given some of the things we have to vote on in different times of years. Um, but also if people have alternative ideas on that, um, I would welcome hearing them as well. And you know, I said, people can reach out to me offline and we can talk about this some more and I'll circle back next month with, you know, some more info on it. I think meeting effectiveness and frequency is something we've talked about a lot and we talk about it effectiveness every, every time we eat. Um, so I'm interested to hear people's ideas on it. Does anyone have any questions or comments right now? And like I said, I'll be reaching out to the board chairs individually on this as well.
So um, one of the things that I was thinking of as you were speaking Sheila, and I agree, I think that this is a really important topic to take a look at, especially in light of recruitment goals. But also think how many times we have committee reports at a regular board meeting where the committee reports out, we weren't able to meet this month because of snow or because somebody was sick or because there was a conflict. And in, when those months happen where you're not able to meet, do you feel that as a committee? Do you go like, oh my goodness, we're months behind because we weren't able to meet? Or are you able to at your next meeting, you know, kind of make, uh, make up for that and still accomplish what you need to accomplish? Even though you've missed a meeting or two. And I think every committee has probably experienced that. So that might help inform people's decisions.
That's a great point. And I don't know, I know for governance, we have topic calendars. I don't know if other people do that, but looking at that too and see if there's things that could be combined, if there's things, you know, um, that would flow better if we condensed them down a bit. Anybody else?
Sheila, I just think this is great, honestly, consolidating it and looking at the efficiency and, and really taking a look at what do we accomplish? You know, we do a lot, but can we do it on a better schedule, in a better rotation, right? And, and really kind of take a look at, okay, what are the votes that we take, that need to be taken at certain times of the year?
Yeah.
And possibly look at it from that perspective, right? Kind of taking a look backwards.
Right.
And say, okay, let's, let's do this in a way that makes sense for everybody.
Yeah, I don't think, and I just would make the point too, I think anything that we've done historically is wrong. I think we've been growing as a school. We're just 16 years in. And there's always room to, to be better and more efficient, you know? Thank you. Anybody else?
Just, I, I don't remember if we had that discussion in full board meeting or governance, so I may be repeating something we talked about in the past, but as we talk about the, the consent agenda and the report outs from the committees, like substituting the live reports with written reports. Uh, one thing that we agree, we don't want to do that with is the executive director report.
Exactly, yeah. Sorry, that's a good point, Raul, because we definitely don't want to lose Ellen's report. It's really meaningful to all of us to see that live and, and to hear what she has to say. So yeah.
Yeah, especially the rassle dazzle.
Sorry, I want to get rid of rassle dazzle. I think we should have like a little musical intro to rassle dazzle, but you know.
Yeah, I always keep you in mind with that, Raul. When I'm looking on my report, I gotta find something for all.
Sorry, Ellen, no getting off the hook there.
You know, one of the things we talked about too, and, and I really am going to wrap them is um, one of the things that we saw, and I think Raul might have mentioned this last month, but I can't remember, so I'm going to say it again. Um, one of the things that we saw at Boston Prep was them really taking a moment at the beginning of their meeting um, to have something. And I think Ellen, Ellen does this um, in a different way. But really think about what our mission and vision are and how we're tying into that. Um, and, and that's important that we don't lose sight of that in all the um, other, other activity we have going on.
And Sheila, we also talked about the parent also giving a full, giving a full like verbal report.
Yes, the parent and, and the faculty rep as well. You're right, yes.
Exactly. That's it. Sorry, sorry Ellen.
Nope, that's okay, because I'm old enough now that it jumped right out of my head, what I was going to add. So um, I, I apologize. There was something there. Let me come back.
Well, we're going to have more time to talk about it. This is the kind of opening salvo. I'm going to reach out to the, um, I'm going to reach out to the chairs and then next month I will update Sarah if you want to put that on. Um, and kind of where we're at and what, you know, an official proposal might look like.
So Sheila, how close do you think we are to being able to try the consent agenda?
I think we could implement it, you know, it might be something we want to think about implementing with the start of the new school year. Um, just to kind of have a clean um, start. That's just like the narrow brain in me, like thinking of a good starting point. Um, I don't think it would take long for us to pull it together. I'd work with Sarah on what we would include and, and all of that. So I don't think it would be a tough one.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great goal. I think we could, we could start with the consent agenda for the summer meeting.
Yep.
And people can, people can practice ahead of time. You can, you can go ahead and start prac, the committee chairs can start practicing by getting their written reports in early. And one of the things I've done is I'm, I'm committing to getting the agenda posted a week before the meeting as well. So we'll give, give a placeholder for people to attach things to or provide comment on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think always looking forward to ways that we can do it, do things differently. I think it's expect, no, just one last comment. I think it's especially important as we work to recruit other outside board members that are not tied to the school to really value their time and, and value all of our time. And we want to use it productively, but it, it would be, it's a a challenge to recruit outside board members already and to make their lives, make their lives easier. Make it a possibility that they can join the board. It's, it is a great thing. All right, uh, on to Kristen, uh, finance.
Finance, all right, sharing my screen. Can't find which one it is. We have several. Can everyone see that? Thumbs up from someone? Yay, thanks everyone. Okay, so uh, we're reviewing the results for February. We reviewed two months last time we met. And we also have a quick summary of the uh, the recent sports programs. I was going to say winter, but it's not really just winter because it's a hybrid as well for there. So uh, on to the numbers for the month of February. And so overall, we have a consistent theme here, right? Because the school has been operating remotely. Um, revenue for the school, total income is ahead of budget. Uh, and that's offset by the, the tuition is above, as is grants on the annual giving program. Annual giving, I think we heard earlier is, is ahead of budget and we'll see that year to date, it's double actually, which is fabulous. Um, we're waiting for tuition update. Uh, it was expected any time now. There's been a lot going on at the state level too. So we expect that to be a bit delayed, but um, when that happens, we'll see a true up come through. And all of the items pretty much included in the budget from a revenue and expense side that have been impacted by working remotely are, are down, right? So rental, our food service income, our student programs, um, student transportation, for example, is, is nil right now. So overall total income for the month is $24,000 over our budget. And on the salary level, again, similarly for those items that are um, most dependent on folks being in person in the school, we're seeing savings, pretty much as you can see, all the parentheses means that we're spending less than we had in the budget. We're pretty much right on track with our people dollars, but in total, the expenses were down by a little over $100,000. So net for the month, $127,000 favorable on the surplus line. For year to date, February, again, same story, we're ahead on our income line, primarily driven by tuition and grants, donations and annual giving. Last month, we also reviewed the detail around the grants and donations. So we know that that's contributing significantly, especially to the supplies and whatnot to allow the school to open in person. Uh, and you know, food service, some of these will change as we start to move back to the uh, in-person model for the rest of the year, but not significantly because it is a short period. So total income, $116,000 over for the year so far. And again, the big item here is waiting to see what will uh, fall out with the tuition update once that comes through. And on the expense side, significantly favorable here, $691,000 year to date, led by the facilities costs, professional development, which is typically timing. We try to spread that over the course of the year, but a lot of times that comes in later. Um, and supplies and equipment. So those costs are also down because we've had some uh, reimbursement uh, to cover those costs too. So overall, very favorable. Um, and there was a projection that uh, Leanna and team put together. We think that overall, we'll probably see a million dollars favorable on the expense line for the year. So as we get closer to that, we'll see more. And on the net surplus level, year to date, $800,000 to the good. If anybody has any questions on the summary of the results before I jump to sports. Don't see any hands. Uh, for the sports summary, this is a combination of fall and winter. We had cross-country golf, basketball, ice hockey, which isn't really part of the school necessarily, and swimming. So a total of 166 students participated in the programs. And in total, there was a loss for the sports for these two periods of about $46,000. Uh, just generally a reminder that the sports programs are a loss uh, later for the school. Uh, we do charge students fees, but there is still more cost than the fees associated with those sports. Uh, but we were uh, really pretty close to and slightly better than the budget. So we do expect that to be the case. But I'm, but we're informing everyone of the significant costs associated with this. Uh, cross-country is very significant in terms of the number of students. Um, but again, it's a less costly sport. You can see on the expense line, there's no additional fee associated with four kicks to rent. But if you look at basketball, uh, there is uh, extra cost associated with that sport. And still, it's a big number of students who participate, which it's fabulous. We want our students to participate, uh, and we support them to the extent that we can from the school. So overall, again, it's a loss for the period and uh, but on budget. So uh, it's good that so many kids were able to participate this year. And as usual, the teams are pretty successful. So it's great. Any questions? Thoughts? All right, that's what we have. I can figure out how to stop sharing.
Questions for Kristen? Uh, no questions. Um, is there any flags of items from the uh, from the, from the committee reports that the board wishes to discuss? Hearing none. Um, meeting wrap-up. So as a review, the action items we had from previous meetings. Um, again, continue to encourage committees to publish their SMART goals and board on track. Um, governance for sort of resetting and working on the SMART goals or, or goals for the board from Samini's report. So I think we'll figure out what we're doing there. So that's, that's it for action items. Sarah, to be, collect any new action items from the board meeting?
Uh, no, I did not. I just have an agenda item or two.
Okay. I know we've talked a lot about meeting effectiveness, but and we have one play, we have one action item that's starting July that we will, we'll, we will take the crack at the consent agenda. Any other thoughts or thoughts or challenges regarding meeting assess, meeting effectiveness? No, I think it's been a well-covered topic and, and thank, thank you for continuing to innovate in that area.
I think we're getting, getting better at staying on time, so.
I was going to say, Sami, you did an excellent job as the timekeeper.
Yeah?
Or losing Jess. Okay, uh, collecting candidate agenda items for April. Um, just a reminder from our board topic calendar, we have items was the budget, the budget for 2021, 2022. Uh, the SMART goal check-in for the board, but I think that one's probably going to be deferred. The family, yeah, the spring family and faculty surveys, which is responsibility to ED. And we already sort of talked about it, but the um, setting up the faculty and parent rep nominations that we should be receiving by the board in, in the April, May timeframe.
So Roger, just to be clear, um, the family, the, the spring surveys, does the task force need to get that going before the next board meeting? Was the next board meeting how we kicked it off? I don't remember the timing.
I think you usually put it out after April vacation, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So we may, I don't know, it may, there may be some logistical work, but I think our target is for them to go out after April, after April break. So there may be some logistics that you'll need to do before then.
Okay, so Sarah, if you want to take this action item, so I don't forget, maybe to say the task force will confirm the timing, you know, the timeline of what we need to do before the survey gets sent out or whatever.
Um, I think, Roger, that we should probably have some extra time for the budget, given the, all the work that the school's going through. So we would probably want to push that to May. I know Leanna said she had something in the chat and I'm looking for it, but I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think now, given, given everything that's uh, I don't see anything in the chat. Um, yeah, given everything that's going on, I would expect that the, the budgets that, that we will would not have the budget till the May timeframe. If that makes sense.
Where did you do that?
So, uh, and finally.
Roger, did you, was, Sheila, was your um, the agenda topic for next week, I mean, for the next meeting, the one to um, report out on what you get from the committee chairs?
Yep, absolutely.
And also one other item that maybe falls, fall forgotten is I know that we, the, we have, as a board, we completed a self-assessment, but we haven't had time to uh, analyze those results yet. So maybe the, the governance can report out in the, in the April meeting? Or, or May, push, you know, your choice. You know, we got a lot of things going on, so.
Um, May might be my preference, but.
Right. Let's go for May then. I mean, we got, you got a lot going on, so.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for uh, action items or agenda items? All right, at this point, hearing no other items. I'm looking for a motion. I'll make a motion to go to executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate. And we will not be reconvening. I'll be inviting Ellen, Mike, uh, Bob Baldwin.
Leanna.
Leanna, Lisa?
Ah, God, I know, I don't think Lisa's joining tonight.
All right, Lisa's not joining us. Uh, I think that's the invite list. Eric, or is Eric not? Would Eric be joining us or no?
Uh, no, Eric was not, it was, we, no one asked me to invite Eric.
No, I was just thinking of the usual people that we invited, so.
Yeah, no, I, I hate to take his evenings unless there's a specific item for him.
So it's Ellen, Mike, Leanna and Lisa?
No, Bob.
Uh, replace, replace Lisa with Bob.
Oh, it's Bob, okay.
So, so I'm looking for a second to that motion and, and we'll be taking a five-minute break and starting the executive session at 8:00 PM.
Second.
I have a second. Uh, Sarah, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes, let me get to the vote here. Okay, okay. All right. So it was Roger, you were the one who made the motion?
Yes, Roger slash Mora.
And Mora, okay. All right. Accord. All right, Jess? And Maura. Okay. All right. Record. All right. Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz? Liz?
Liz seems frozen. She may not be able to hear us.
Okay. Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Did we, now is Liz, she's gone?
All right.
Okay.
All right. Meeting, motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. We will meet in executive session on the other link starting at 8:00 PM.